Call the meeting of the county's commission board if you stand in the right.
Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cool over minutes?
Second.
The motion, second. And in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same side. Motion carried. Visitors and delegations.
I'd like to be able to have the first five minutes interrupted hopefully it will be less than five minutes.
Pardon?
Hopefully it will be less than five minutes. I really wish to be uninterrupted. I would appreciate it. I'm gonna cut it down a little bit. Sixty years on this planet about, I've lived in a lot of places. Big cities, small towns, large communities, middle of nowhere. I've seen a lot of politics in my day. I've seen places run by law. Cartels have their hand in it, Los Angeles have their hand in it. I lived in a community where the prosecutor of the county suborned perjury to get a drug conviction. But I have never seen such nonsense as what's going on with this LEC business. I really haven't. I, I'm really quite long the way by it. As an activist, a lot of people come to my door. Mothers, fathers. I've had a lot of experience with people that had issues with the LEC, former business, I'm talking about the jail, under previous administration, recent previous administration, that is factual, that I can report witness to. I'll just give you a couple. Pregnant woman may sleep on floor. Correctional officer keeps an inhaler from an asthmatic, federally recognized disability violation of federal statute of disability. Calls denied. A man with a serious heart infection does not know who's a junkie. Even junkies deserve life. Instead of taking him to the hospital, he got released out of the prison, out of the jail. He gets on the streets. His sister's willing to come here and talk about it. Sister's a witness. He died shortly thereafter. Native American detained neither. Made work before they were adjudicated. Oh, witness to that. Short period of time, no, it's a period of time. Witness to that. Brought that up to my boss. She tells him about it. Another man, puking his guts out, blood everywhere. Not one CO coming to him. Hey, HIV. Big mess on the floor, possibly HIV could have hepatitis. Somebody's dear little son that just might have got called in on a DUI or something. Small thing. Could have been infected. He doesn't get taken. He doesn't get taken to the hospital because he's one of the boys in town. Yeah, there's witnesses to this. Federal detainees that know the book, that know the federal book, they know exactly what they're supposed to get when they're incarcerated and they're denied it. And they know how to ditch the BOP. Previous administrations had not nobody on a commission, on any commission, where is the hell about them? Nobody. Alright? That's just a taste of it. That's a taste of factual information that's gone on in the LEC. And I could go around to BCI, to those like police department and to the shares department, factual information that is back there, on what a record things have been and on a download, just as something absurd, by the book done. So, what's going on now? I understand that there has been a letter submitted by one of the COs. His wife and I had a run-in at the store. I know her, I've known her for a long time. She has a Martin syndrome. Known her for an extended period of time. In fact, I went and talked to one of her former coworkers. I just walked up to say hello to her and I saw her daughter. I'll make it brief. She asked me what I thought about what's going on at the LEC. And I said, "I think it's a bunch of bullshit. I think it's witch hunt."
Language.
And I want my five minutes over.
You don't have your five minutes, you've already used your five minutes.
No, I have.
The language can tone down. We don't need to use that kind of language here.
What kind of language do I need to use?
To get just cursed.
Oh, I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry. But considering the vile, venomous tone of language that's come behind Coward's, a face going, if I stepped out of line, I'd really have to apologize. I'd be much more worried about that. Slander and libel are serious. Very serious. This woman got a bean or bonnet when I said, "Give me a factual piece of evidence that Ms. Deegan has ever done wrong." She's ruined my life. She's ruined my life. She's an evil woman. I said, "Tell me what she did." "I can't." "Tell me what she did." "I can't." "One piece of factual evidence, please." "I can't." She goes home, distorts the conversation, jerk her cussing, and hence a letter. Now, I don't need to take a note of that conversation. I'd like to see if she would take a note of that conversation. This is ridiculous. This is like junior high. It's absolutely ludicrous when you have things like this going on. So, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna let it loose to the press any which way I can if I've got a hover plane and put flyers in the air on what's really going on here as a witch hunt. Because somebody's buddy got fired and nobody's looking at the kites. Those are the complaints from the inmates. They're not all deathheads. They're human beings and they have a certain standard that this community, that this nation, has to provide. No matter what their crime is. Otherwise, we're not civilized at all. And that's something everybody in this room better think about because that's how we're judged at the end. Individually and collectively. So, look at the facts, please. But the rest of it, as soon as my computer's up and running and I can get the ponies in, huh, it's going to the press, whoever I can get to take it.
Okay, okay. You're done. You've got your fire.
Oh, far from that mark.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak today?
Just a, I got a couple questions. Jessica, have you ever taken a story to the city commission?
I talked to him about it. I told him I was gonna write it and we're all.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Give me an answer. Have you ever taken a story to the other four counties that are involved in this law enforcement?
No, I haven't. No, I haven't. I'm going to the LEC meeting tomorrow.
You're going, what?
I'm going to the meeting tomorrow.
But you've never made an appointment to or taken the time to drive over to these other counties and try to explain to them what's going on?
No, I haven't.
There's two from this commission that sits on the law enforcement center board.
I can all worry about that.
There are two from the city commission.
I talked to Mr. Strong.
But there's four others.
Right. The first time I went to an LEC board meeting was not that long ago. That's the first time I went. But I would love to be, to sit down with them. These individuals that I'm talking about, I am going to contact. I'm also gonna contact the former inmates because that's what really needs to be looked at here as well.
I guess we have it on our agenda here, you know, discuss this on our page. I'll bring up some more of my comments and. But I would strongly encourage you.
Absolutely, I will.
To address these other commissions.
I will.
They all have representatives. They don't have two, but they have one.
Right.
And that's four. So. Name, you know, one thing I could add is you really don't have a big piece of the money pie here. Not a big piece at all. A little slip, really. So.
One thing I would say.
I would commend you for being up in, staying on this project. Do you have any ideas that you could tell me on what to do about it?
I've been talking to Steve.
Good. He's probably one of the most knowledgeable and developed running one of these law enforcement centers in North Dakota.
And he is very willing to work.
Yeah, I think he is.
Okay. Roger Gunderson on the replacement of North Elevator Door with bid opening.
These bid openings are actually for the Lake Ridge.
For the Lake Ridge.
Great. And I've already had Lonnie open since he's our state's attorney.
As the court commissioner, be reminded, I don't think we got any bids to first go around. So, what we did is we called around to try to get, try to recruit people to bid and this is the result of that.
And this is the bid requirements that was published.
Carthy Electric, Moll's Link. Certified check. I'll leave that in the envelope. First one I've not reviewed, I'll just leave that for open reading. Here's the proposal. Lake Ridge Electric with a bid on it. From the proposal.
That would be the one base bid.
Base bid from Lake Ridge Electric is thirty-two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Base bid from Carthy Electric is twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Everything was in order?
It looked to me like the form of the bid that pertains to the advertisement, maybe we could have Roger review that.
Actually, Josh from, is it Josh?
Oh, yeah.
Was it, wants to take a review. Do you need the specimen or can we get it?
You know, it wouldn't hurt, I could say to my head, "I'll copy too."
If you want to, there's a chair out here.
How did you both of us, companies look at the project? Understand the project?
Yes. And Scoop didn't know that we got two.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, well, he reviews those. We'll skip down, we'll start with Rhonda. We may interrupt you, Rhonda. Oh, Roger's got more.
Regarding the spring, earlier April, May, we were gonna try and get grant money to replace doors and windows in the armory. And that did not go through. But the north door of the Memorial Building, I would still like to try and replace because it is getting in pretty poor condition. And I guess what I'm looking for there is to just get your approval to go ahead and get estimates. From previous, we've replaced the other doors in the Memorial Building Armory and I'm gonna guess it's gonna be in a neighborhood of twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars to replace that.
Which door exactly is that?
Going north door of the gym.
Oh. Are you telling all of them?
No, we're.
On the way where the ramp is the.
Yes.
Where the loading.
Yes.
I'll move to approve. Is the motion, is it a second? Motion in the second? Okay.
On this one, he's just getting proposals now.
Okay.
Okay. Also, I got on there the roof between the courthouse and Memorial Building. And last summer, I actually got approval to get estimates. And Target finally gave me an estimate. And I got a estimate of sixty-four hundred and seventeen dollars to re-roof that area between. And during our heavier rains, we've had leaks coming through there. So, you know, I don't know if there's anybody else around to get an estimate from, to do that work. So.
What's up there, the rubber roof?
Yeah.
So there would be.
Rock pile.
Yeah, there would be anybody else in the.
No.
Cone kitty that would be.
No. There's one that really is around, yes.
The area is approximately around?
About what? Must be close to off. Hundred feet, uh, now. Just put it all, it's kinda L-shaped if you put it all in, yeah, it's probably a hundred feet close to it by twenty-five.
Did we still back rock, pre-rerope it and put rock back on it?
Yeah. They did, they.
Better.
Pardon?
When was it done last?
Before I got here.
Hold on. Make a motion that we move forward with the repair on the.
Motion in the second.
Is there money, budget for that?
And do we need to further advertise then for bids?
Well, the bid requirement is like a hundred thousand dollars when you're looking at construction. You always prefer to do public bidding, but when we have smaller things like this come up, we usually call a number of the local contractors and ask for some proposals.
So we're safe.
Close to the time, that's what it'll.
You're comfortable, Roger?
Yeah, I, I think it's probably fairly reasonable just judging by what they've charged when they done the armory and Memorial Building, so.
There's a motion in the second.
Martins? Brown? Eisler? Olson?
Aye. Motion carried. Anything else? That's all. We'll skip to Rhonda. We may interrupt.
Okay, that's fine. I think this will be pretty quick.
Okay.
The surveillance committee met to open up the bids and we had to reject them because we did not receive one bid for the project. We did receive one bid, but the bid was not complete. We didn't have, they didn't have their contract, their contractor's license or their bonding information included. So, we had to reject it. So, I guess we're respectfully asking the commission to reject that bid for a motion. And then we would ask please for a motion to re-advertise. And then Kristen was doing some work with Todd from, I think it's Todd from Icon, surrounding, trying to figure out why we didn't get more bids. Because we should have gotten, we feel like we should have got more bids. So, we're gonna work on that. That's only happening.
I'll move to reject the bid. And also the re-advertising.
So, you would like both of those in a motion?
Yeah, one more.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, another question. They didn't understand that they needed a bond and a contract.
It was totally stated in that publication.
It was.
North Port Alvin, go down that.
I would say.
I don't know. I mean, they certainly know, but who knows?
Yeah, I think it was an oversight.
Did they understand it now? That's what you clarify with Icon, no, see if they come up with any deficiencies that might have been in the original bid. Or maybe that maybe might have took somebody up there.
One of the responses she got back was she thought there was a disconnect between, the person said, "There's no way you can run the conduit that way" or something. So, maybe that it's written poorly so they don't understand because obviously North Port Alvin thought they could. But we haven't told North Port Alvin that because we had to wait. So, we had a motion to reject it before Elizabeth was gonna call them this C. I think it must have been an oversight. I guess, Mr. Brown asked a question. It must have been an oversight.
Did the telephone have Icon's disposal? They did?
And it's clearly stated.
Yeah.
They did?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda frustrating. I have a copy of the publication if you wanna see it.
Yeah, that's true. Has Icon been notified of this problem?
They were here and they, yeah, they came to the bid opening. If I could just add one thing too, on another note, we did talk about panic button, which is panic buttons, the committee did. And it's gonna be pretty expensive, so we'd have to request, have a request for some budgetary funds. So, we have to meet as a bigger group, though we only had three people present, so just a heads up.
What's the panic button?
Yeah. Underneath your desk.
Tell the grandkids come.
I don't like that. It goes right to the law enforcement center or to nine-one-one dispatch and it means that please send someone, you don't talk at all. So, most offices, actually, we're kind of one of the last offices that I can find. Social service offices and other offices, tax offices, auditors' offices, most of them have at least one.
In North Dakota?
Yeah.
Really?
How about the courts?
Yeah, the courtrooms do.
The courtroom here already have them, correct? Okay.
Is that sent by air?
That's through the phone lines.
Through the phone lines.
Wasn't that, didn't we, we have to wait till Sheriff Nelson is there because there's some issue, I mean, there's some issues. I mean, you need to figure out what we wanna do, but.
Is that it there, Rhonda?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there was a motion in the second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Close same side. Motion carried.
Can I read that motion then?
Yes.
Motion by Hi-Isaiah, second round to reject the one bid, research on North Port Alvin Company on the surveillance system due to not compliance with the publication for North Port Center. And to re-advertise for the project. Is that pretty clear now?
Pending review by Icon, I might add to that.
Okay, the re-advertising.
Yeah. In case there's, in case there's something missing there that would have made it more clear for some reason? I'm not sure.
It's electric, hold on, order.
Uh, it's interesting you bring up the contractor licensing. As part of this, I don't see a license for either of these. And actually, one of the, one of the gentlemen did call me and said he does not have a current one. And he submitted private for the bid. For whatever reason, he had lost it through receptionist, secretarial, or whatever it was. But that is something we need to verify what the bid is. We've got two here. This one, because I understand that he doesn't have his current North Port Alvin contractor's license. This one, I think we just need to verify he does. If he does, I think we're in compliance with this one, with this one. If he doesn't, we have to reject it.
And it's in, it's in the advertising of the project?
It's in the specifications, yeah.
I think you must have.
We have to. So, we'll just need to verify that this one does. And I think you've got a good bid here. That's the thing we don't like here.
We'll wanna do that before we approve this?
Yes, I think I'll definitely have to.
So, do we need table until I next meeting now?
Motion is there, second? Motion in the second. All in favor, aye? All in favor, say aye? Close same side.
Okay, with that.
We also could have just moved on it, you know, pending the modification of the, we're allowed to do that, right?
Well, there's, there's two, there's two different issues. One is for the surveillance project and the other is for.
I'm just talking about the good, good present. We could approve it contingent on the license.
Let's, let's have it in hand before you approve it. If you don't mind. Is there any issue in time?
Uh, no, there shouldn't be.
I just have one more question with that. We have not signed the contract with ours elevator due to the fact that once we sign this, they will order the pipe parts. And then we'll be on.
We'll be on the hook.
We'll be on the hook. So, do we wanna wait for this also till we. So, can I include any of that motion then to not sign the contract to wait until it's pulled in?
Okay. Steve, travel question, self-discussed.
Okay. It's our state travel, it's that crime conference I try to attend every year. I don't make it every year, but I try to. This one is in South Dakota. It's the MLCIC conference. I guess I'd just like to question approval to attempt to attend it. Of course, barring anything happening here, of course, which is canceled. It's the third week of eight August.
What do you guys expect?
Yeah. It's a dead one. So. That would be the one issue. The next one's something completely.
Would you like a motion? If the motions are second? Motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Close same side. Motion carried.
And the second issue is cell phones. We're looking at, we're having some issues with our current cell phones, which we've had for a couple of years now. We just have the flip phones for our department. With modern technology, we're being kind of pushed into the smartphone. Issues with our patrol guys because dispatchers and state radio can now push pictures to your smartphone for identifying things. And then we can also, I was in contact with state radio yesterday and they said they're working on an application that we can actually access driver's licenses, motor vehicle registrations in probably the next six, eight months to nine months down the road. So, we have to replace cell phones no matter what we do because the two we have, two we have are not functioning very well right now. And I'm thinking, wow, we might as well think ahead here and try to get some upgrade now for an upgrade instead of having to do it again in a year. So, I did call, went through Elizabeth, we called the AT&amp;T representative for government contracts. We can get the cell phones for free or the smartphones for free, but our cost per plan is gonna go up almost double, more than double. I think we're paying twenty-two seventy per phone right now, rough give or take a little. That sound about right?
On average, I would say probably.
And now we're looking at fifty a month instead of the twenty-two per phone. So, it's a pretty. So it's a pretty significant, oh.
Are we looking in six months to having to do that anyhow?
Well.
Six months to a year?
Six months to a year, we won't be having to, but we probably should. I mean, it's never a requirement you have to go up there, but to keep up with, you know, um, if we're out at somewhere and, and our dispatch center here can email a mugshot of a person we're looking for and positively identify them, I mean, that's huge for our, our cops on the street. So. We have seven. And we can get the phones, uh, we, we try to get the best phone we can for the cheap, you know, we can get the phones for nothing. It's just that we're going to have to up our service plan. Like I said, I think it's forty-nine, well, there's, we've got a couple of different ones, but the, the cheapest two are just under fifty dollars. Forty-eight seventy-five and forty-nine sixty-one for, you know, they're less than a dollar apart, but they're right under that fifty-dollar mark. So I guess I just thought I'd like you guys to have the input of what we should do or. I think we should go ahead with it because it's going to be here eventually anyway.
So then will you put that additional two thousand dollars in your budget for the coming year?
I haven't yet, but I could amend it.
Can you amend?
I probably think we could probably get it in there the way it is right now without having to amend too much. I think I can probably, and simply because we've added money for, uh, Lexible. Well, I just got notified that Lexible is going to reimburse us again this year for a hundred percent of our participation. That's three thousand six hundred dollars.
So we have.
So I have it, I mean, I have it in my current budget this year already. I got that extra three grand. So this year I'm covered and I could, we could work with next year's. I'm anticipating they're going to do the same thing next year, but I have built in a little. I think I could be okay with the current budget the way it is.
Do you have anything to be something that you'll use great bit?
Well, yeah, I do, really.
With the next generation?
Well, and then here, and then if I want to get in this great big discussion about technology, but right now, you know, we have in-car computers in our car, right? They're about three thousand dollars apiece. They have to be replaced every two to three years because they wear out. We're actually looking at, Chief Schroeder and I are looking at going to pads. Because they're of the same purpose of our this smartphone. We can push stuff out to our guys with, and a replacement for a pad is five to six hundred dollars each versus three thousand dollars each. So that's what's coming in the near future, so, I mean, we're actually going to save money in the long run, but it's going to take a little bit to get there, but. That's, uh, Pembina County is already using the pads in there and it's amazing what you can do with those things. And they're paying, I think they pay six hundred dollars apiece for their, their pads. And, uh, you know, we're paying three thousand for a computer, which is kind of outdated. I mean, so anyway, that's what's coming in the, in the next year, year and a half. So, but I guess, I guess I'd like to go ahead with the cell phones and, and increase the plan. I think I can work it into my budget currently without having to increase it at all, so.
There's a motion, there a second? There was a motion by Commissioner Brown.
Olson.
Second by Murtagh, or by Commissioner Heisler?
Jan Burns?
Aye.
Heisler, uh, Brown?
Aye.
Olson.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
That's it?
Totally done.
Thank you.
We have a special permit.
Yeah, I was just going to say, uh, we could, on the business, with Vision Library Board appointment.
There has been no official, there was no interest with the advertisement, but that kind of got somebody on the line, which is good to give. So they, that they would, they would take it. And is it a one-year term, two-year term, three-year term?
I think it's a three-year, it's a three-year, it's a three-year term, okay.
You got a name or?
No, not how they say, not, not how they say they'll do it, I don't.
Well, you gotta ask them yet.
I've already asked them, but.
Approved special permit?
Motion to, what, second?
There's a motion and a second.
And that's for the one with the C wing?
For Charleston Green. Legal. All in favor say aye. Aye, both same sign, motion carried. And it being five oh five, we will pass the option over to our officer.
Who's the option here? You guys can sign on the screen.
Oh, I guess.
Okay.
Come on in, guys.
There's a couple of rules and regulations to start on the action before we start. Um, we're not going to go one cent. If you're, if, say you're the highest bidder and your highest bid for instance is Cliff Reeves, he's got number, item number two, it's twelve dollars. Even though it's thirteen dollars, fourteen dollars. There's no sensitive, you know, it's got to be in dollar increments, no less. And then, once you get your bid, you need to come in tomorrow morning and get a receipt from my deputy. Then you pick up your items, but you need a receipt to pick one up. So everybody, is that?
May I, uh, sit up, Cliff called and he won't be able to make it, but he asked if I would be able to do it beforehand?
Nope, it has to be a person with my understanding in the video action.
Do you have that right?
No, he just called me on my phone when I was pulling up here. He was like, somebody dropped the trap here, and he said like, I can't make it.
No, I don't want it. Item number one is a wood computer desk and looks like nobody bid on it. Is there anybody on the floor that want to bid on that one? Item number one, no bids. Item number two, we have two bidders and the highest bid is Cliff Reeves and he's got it for twelve dollars. And Veronica's the other bidder, is she here? Nope, so Cliff Reeves gets it for twelve dollars. There should be a list, there's, it's right here. Item number three is a two drawer file cabinet. Cliff Reeves bid, Jerry Retschel bid, Veronica Taylor bid, Roger Beaver and Jean Sarah Rutter. The high bid is ten dollars and fifteen five cents by Roger Beaver. Is there anybody here that wants to bid him up that bid on it? Roger's got that one too. Item number four is a five drawer cabinet. Um, the high bidder is Roger Beaver. Jean, Jerry and Cliff bid on it, is any of them here? Oh, Jean is, did you want to bid that one up, Jean?
Uh, what's, what do I have to say?
Roger is the higher, highest bidder and he's got fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents, so you need to go with sixteen dollars.
Okay.
Seventeen?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
Thirty.
Okay, Jean's got it for thirty? The next item is number five, five drawer cabinet. Um, the highest bidder is Roger Beaver for twenty dollars and fifty-five cents. Kevin bid, Jean bid, Jerry bid, Cliff bid, and I bid. Is there anybody that wants to bid, try to up?
Twenty-five.
Okay. How much?
Thirty.
Okay.
I'll go thirty-five.
Maybe forty. I'll pass it on.
Okay. Anyone else want to bid? That's on, that bid on it? Okay, Roger gets it for forty. The next item is a five drawer file cabinet and the highest bidder is Jan Visity for sixty dollars. Is she present? Does anybody that bid on it want to bid her up? Kevin? Jean? Roger? Jerry, no, okay, so Jan gets it for sixty dollars. The next item is number seven, a five drawer file cabinet, again, Roger Beaver bid fifteen fifty-five. Kevin, Jerry and Cliff bid on it. Did you want to bid on it, Kevin? Anybody else here that bid on it? Okay, so Roger gets that one for fifteen fifty-five. The next item is a five drawer file cabinet. Roger bid fifteen fifty-five. Jean, Jerry, Cliff and myself bid on it. Does Jean, do you want to bid him up?
You'll just number eight?
Yes.
I'll go thirty.
Thirty?
Aye. Forty.
Forty, okay, Jean gets it for forty.
You could bid, yeah.
No, I don't think. I, I don't. I don't need any. Number nine is a four drawer file cabinet and the high bidder is Jan Visity. Does anybody want to bidder up? Chris bid on that, Roger Beaver and Cliff Reeves. I think Roger's the only one here.
What's the bid?
Eighty.
Eighty.
She owns it.
Okay. Next item is number ten, five drawer file cabinet, Roger Beaver is fifteen fifty-five and I don't think any of the other bidders are here. So Roger gets it for fifteen fifty-five. The next one is a number eleven, five drawer file cabinet, Roger Beaver is twenty fifty-five and the other two bidders are here. Number twelve, five drawer cabinet, high bidder is Roger Beaver and it's fifteen fifty-five. Jean, do you want to bid him up?
Thirty. Thirty-five, forty.
Okay, Jerry's not here, okay. So Jean gets it for forty dollars. Item is number thirteen is IBM server, Darren Anderson and Roger Beaver and Darren bid fifteen dollars. Darren, is he there?
Yes, now.
Okay. Roger, did you want to bid him up?
He better have it.
Okay. Number fourteen is a set of two computer monitors, Darren Anderson is a high bidder of five dollars and Ulysses Jones is a dollar. Do you want to bid him up?
Fifty, I have fifty.
We have to go a dollar each one.
Six.
Six dollars, okay.
He can have it.
Okay. So Ulysses gets it for six. The next is another set of two computer monitors, Ulysses and Darren bid, the high bid is five dollars. You want to bid them?
Six.
Okay, Darren?
He can have it.
Okay. The next item is number sixteen, two sets of computer monitors and it's between Darren and Ulysses again. Darren bid five.
He can have it.
Okay. The next item is number seventeen, the same thing, Darren Anderson five, Ulysses one dollar.
He can have it.
The next item, same thing, Ulysses a dollar and Darren five.
Six. Ten. You have it. He can have it.
Eleven, Ulysses. Okay, next nineteen is the same thing, one dollar, Ulysses and Darren five.
He can have it now.
Okay. Number twenty, same thing, Ulysses a dollar and Darren five.
He can have it.
Okay, number twenty-one is a single computer monitor, Ulysses a dollar and Veronica sailors two fifty.
Now to go three fifty?
No, no, it's a three, it's a three.
Three.
Okay. So you get it for three, I don't think Veronica's here, is she? The next item, nobody bid on, is number twenty-two, three computer monitor stands. Does anybody want to bid on it? This one's open. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Darren Anderson gets it for a dollar. The next item is a wood table, number twenty-three, nobody bid on that, so that's off into the floor. Anybody want a wood table? No bids? Okay, the next item is number twenty-four is a metal table and that was bid on by Cliff Reeves and Roger Beaver. Roger got the high bid at twenty dollars and fifty-five cents. Cliff's not here, so Roger gets it. Number twenty-five, metal table. Jan Visity is twenty-five dollars, Tony Jacobson, is she here? So Jan Visity gets that one. Next item is twenty-six, a wood table, there's nobody bidding on it. Is anybody from the floor want to bid on it? No? Number twenty-seven, wood table, is there any bids from the floor? No. Number twenty-eight is a file cabinet, Cliff Reeves is a high bid of seventeen, Jerry ten and Roger Beaver fifteen fifty-five. High bid is seventeen, did you want to bid that one up, Roger?
I'll pass it.
Okay. And Jerry's not here, so Cliff Reeves gets that, gets that. Twenty-nine is a roller cabinet, Cliff has bid twenty-six and Roger Beaver twenty dollars and fifty-five cents. Do you want to go up on that one, Roger?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? So you get it for twenty-seven. Cause he's not here to bid. Next item is thirty, office chair. High bid is Leo Bitner, ten dollars and Cliff isn't here, so Leo Bitner gets it. Number thirty-one, office chair, Cliff Reeves gets it because he's the only bidder. Number thirty-two, office chair, Cliff Reeves is six dollars. Kristy Lance, she's not here, so Cliff gets it. Do you want me to read these all? Thirty-three, there's a bid, but nobody else bids, so he gets it. Number thirty-four, Ulysses is the only bid, so he gets it. Office chair, number thirty-five, there's no bids. Does anybody from the floor want to bid on that? No? Okay. Thirty-six, Darren Anderson, you get the computer keyboards for a buck. Number thirty-six, seven, I mean, is a HP desk jet printer. No bids, does anybody want to bid on that? Number thirty-seven, no? Number thirty-eight is HP desk jet printer, does anybody want to bid, bid on that?
There's one of them that I was looking at in the past.
Oh, which one?
It's the large format HP.
Just bid on both of them and get them both.
Okay.
Okay, you want both of those for what?
Sure.
Okay, laptop dock station, there's no bids, does anybody from the floor want to bid on it? Nobody? HP monitor stand, nobody bid on that, does anybody want to bid on that? HP office jet printer, want to bid on that one too, Darren?
Sure.
How much? Anybody else? No? Darren got it for a dollar then? Number forty-two.
It's a thousand four dollars to you to take.
Number forty-two is a HP monitor stand, anybody on the floor want to bid on that? No, moving on. There are number forty-three, HP desk jet printer, Darren, you want that one too?
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, the next thing is a hanging coat rack and Jerry gets that, he's the only bidder. Number forty-five, HP office jet printer. Want that one too, Darren? Anybody else? Okay. The next one is a Sony camera and Jean Sarah's got and myself bid, so Jean, you got it for five dollars. Sony camera. The next item is forty-seven, two office light fixtures, does anybody from the corner want to bid on? No? Next is forty-eight, long white pushmore. We got a tied bid between Cliff Reeves and Kevin Fieldson.
Arm wrestling.
He's not here.
We did the arm wrestling this.
So somebody has to bid it up too, because it's Todd even though he's on.
Thirty-six.
Okay. Kevin gets Mark. Mark, you want to bid up?
Forty.
Forty?
You own it.
Okay. Number forty-nine.
According to Roger.
Number forty-nine is a two thousand ten Ford Crown Vip. We have Cliff, Jeff, Roger and Kevin Fieldson and the high bidder is. Ulysses?
Ulysses, Todd.
One thousand five sixty-eight, does anybody want to bid on it?
What, has he heard?
Is he out there?
Nope, they aren't here.
What is it?
Um.
Jeff's out here.
Jeff's out here.
Jeff's out here.
The Crown, yeah.
We're on the Crown Vip, so.
One thousand five sixty-eight. No? Roger, you want to bid it up? Kevin?
No.
Nobody else? Okay, he's got it. Whoever. It came next to him. Okay, so I just need the motion to accept this, all it's.
So most of the steps I will be, the motion is back.
Second. In the same case, no, Ulysses if you, you've got a few things, come in the morning and get a receipt first before you pick them up. I don't know if you've heard that before the.
No, so I can wait and pick it up in the morning?
Come to the auditor's office and the deputy Sandy will give you a receipt after you pay for it. And then all items are now in the basement.
So I can pay and pick it up in the morning?
Yeah, pay first and then take your receipt downstairs.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you folks, see you tomorrow. So there was a motion in the second, all would say it's aye.
Aye.
All closing sign, motion carried.
And didn't have to buy anything? There's still some stuff down there for you. There's still some stuff down there for you. I need to get rid of some stuff.
Alright, we'll start with our old projects, uh, round twenty-four, well by July, they've started to do the dirt work here now, so. Seven months we should be in line for getting the paving done at the end of July, that's when. Mayo was anticipating it had done. Any questions on that project? Truck roads, uh, let's look, all.
Designs were done, that helped came up for Bisburg, here's how we helped put it up with the right away. And then I guess we looked back at the minutes from June third and I guess in Jerry's letter to the commission. Um, he had comparable sales two thousand fifty, but he set the waiver valuation at twenty-one hundred. And the minutes short of that two thousand fifty, I guess those, a little clarification on that. Um, I guess I thought that we were going at twenty-one hundred, um, so I guess we made the motion at that amount, if we're gonna revise it.
I'll make the motion or revise the minutes or clarify that minutes to include the one twenty-one hundred for price for the.
I think since the minutes were approved, I'm not sure, I think you should just make a new motion.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Second.
And that one also followed Jerry's recommendation.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all closing sign, motion carried.
Okay, I'm sure Jim and Sarah have had mail, most, most of the landowners are out of state, so we're doing through mail. Doctor, we made contact with them, uh, Darren, excuse me, went to the landowners tonight here, so hopefully we'll get that signed up.
So, any questions on truck road then? Okay, we'll move on to the next one, Ramsey eight, we did get a proposal from. I try to remember, did I put that second color again?
Yeah, it was twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for the pipe installation and then also a little bit additional gravel over the whole. Top of that excavation and four inches of asphalt over that excavation, so, um, we had about. Make with the current estimate for the engineering, how we got about fifty-four thousand, got the federal aid to work with, so, um, you know, within that. So we matched it eighty percent.
Okay, any questions, so we'll probably see and change order for that.
Right.
Just so you're aware. Any questions on eight? Ramsey nine, there's nothing new, that's closest project again, that's just that he's busy doing, ten, Ramsey ten. Uh, Ramsey twenty-ten? We've got quite a few of those culverts sitting out, I think we only got a few left, but.
No, we've got, uh, three left after today. So, uh, they figured they'd be done with that either by the end of this week or sometime next week and last, like most several of the others next week. They're gonna go over to nine after they're done on ten, so I don't exactly know if that's changed or not, but that's what they've had before.
Landowner over there seemed to be satisfied with the ditch in reference, so that's four, four inch elevation difference in the culverts.
I haven't heard from them.
You haven't heard anything from them?
No, we straightened out the one that he brought up and then straightened out some other ones, so.
And he seems to be fine with that.
Yeah, he hasn't.
Said you had three left. How many culverts have we put in here?
Oh gosh.
There's not a dozen, we include the four together, this four. It's twelve hundred feet anyway.
They haven't moved, have they, yet?
No, they're working on, they're all down, pushing out, get the wind filled out. Looks like it's culverts out of the way, but they may move much faster.
I did get a call, excuse me, from Greg today about, um, closing that road to traffic. He's, his thought was he could save us some money by not doing pilot cars, but I don't know, I, I. The only problem I see is there's gonna be a. Mid raised project out, out in the middle of the job that somebody else is gonna be doing and he'll be fighting that traffic, so I don't know, I guess it's something I'm. Gonna take a lot of look at as far as not having a pilot car out there, but just so you're aware, Greg closed to bring that up. Saying that he could probably save us some money and we'll look into it before we make the decisions.
What are the legalities of that in the case of an accident with no pilot car?
Big, yeah. It's a large issue, we need to look at.
I might recommend that you.
Leave it like it was, yeah.
It was, it was bid so far under any wing that I think that we should spend the money and keep the safety trap in place.
Right.
That's probably, sorry, that's just my opinion, but.
Yeah, honestly, you'll have rock trucks running, you'll have dirt trucks running, so there's gonna be like a. Most nice run all over out there, so. It's probably a good idea to keep on. Any other questions on Ramsey ten? Okay, Ramsey seven, on the bottom of the page that we did include the what the bid prices were on there and. As you can see around the Blue Region was a little bidder at forty-one thousand, six ninety-six, seventy-nine cents. Uh, that was way under what we had estimated, so I think it's a good, good price, so I guess I entertain a motion to award that project. On Ramsey seven two, around the Blue Region.
I'll move that, get around the Blue Region and bid on that.
Motion is there, second? Second by Commissioner Brown.
One question, what's their start and end date there? Did we put a fine date on it?
We did put an end date, I don't know, we proposed a start date. I think, I talked to him today, he was asking when the motion would be made, I think he was looking at a week to ten days of starting after, so.
To do it?
To start.
To start.
I don't know, it won't take that long to do it.
Alright, I just. You know, just so they don't have it tied up for sixty days or something.
Yeah. Uh, if, what decent weather, two, three days at the most.
Okay. Okay, there was a motion, a second, we'll call.
Hi sir, bye. Burns, Brown.
Alright, motion carried.
Okay, and then back to, a while back we had a recommendation from the water board for a culvert from. S Miller, or Bridge Culvert, I guess it is now. The water board's recommendation was to put an additional culvert in, additional forty-eight inch culvert and extend two that are there. And we looked at it, had Nick and I both looked at it and we think that we can do it. Uh, it's not gonna be too big of a deal, well, it's, it's along with the water, it'd keep coming out. There's a pretty good flow through there right now, so, but there's enough culverts in there that we can kind of reroute the water to work, get the work done, so. I guess I'd be looking for a motion to go along with what the water board had recommended on that bridge number, one point seven eighteen. We wanted.
Okay, you were just heard, tell me.
With our crew.
Well, after ran an excavator, with our crew, yes.
You got some other things lined up too, Kevin and?
Uh, just one other one is all, just two little ones, so we won't have it for a full month, but.
Be nice, we haven't gotten one every year to, you know, keep practice up on that kind of stuff, so I think you can do that.
Yeah, we're getting caught up, is the thing, which is a good feeling.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all closing sign, motion carried.
And then, I'd like a motion to buy those culverts, which will cost about six thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion is there, second? All the favors say aye? All the, all the call.
Burns, Isler, uh, Brown, also.
Aye. Motion carried.
Now I just have one more thing, uh, finally got through all over in two thousand one, FEMA stuff and it's. I don't know, it has to be done by November tenth of this year, so I'd like to advertise some bids to get that done. There's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of material to put on, so it's something that's gonna have to be bid. So I'd like to, a, a motion to go ahead and advertise for that project.
We're doing with that, you know?
Uh, it goes all over the county, like, uh, all our non-federal aid roads, it's FEMA money is what it is. There's some south of Penn, underground harbor, uh, there's some down on four, south of Glen, Bartlett North. And, oh, the county lineup by Hampden. It's all there.
Motion is there, second? Motion by Commissioner Isler.
That's all I have. We only got both, sorry.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All closing sign, motion carried. That's all you have. Unfinished business, LEC discussion. Who'd like to start?
You.
What would you like to know?
Anything you should know?
There's lots you should know, I believe.
Yeah, I would say.
Well, we're trying to move forward, I, I don't, I, I personally don't know what progress is, I'll find that out tomorrow. We're supposedly full staff, we're still paying overtime.
Well, we can't be full staff anymore after last week.
No, don't believe so, probably not.
Yeah, you asked somebody already, okay, okay, well, that's what we wanted to know.
Yep. See, I didn't know that we, we had hired anybody yet.
That's why we gotta fill your roles these things, I guess.
Okay.
And Craig.
Craig, you're here with the, for the discussion, you have any input to the?
Well, I was here thinking that maybe you're gonna discuss the juvenile issue.
That's part of the LEC. We can discuss that.
Does anyone have anything that you'd like to ask about that? I'll give you my perspective.
Okay, let's have your perspective first.
Well, um. I, you know, I think we've identified some costs and I don't know if you have a chance to review those costs?
They haven't been brought to the.
Are you gonna do that, Mark, are you gonna talk about costs?
I have no costs.
Cost, what?
I, I don't have paperwork with me either, Craig, so, I mean, if people wanna.
Well. Yeah, I guess I wasn't prepared, I, I'd expand on the cost, but I thought you'd ask some questions about the juvenile.
Are, are we on track, are we, when, do you have a date?
As to the cost?
No, I'm asking, do we have a date that we're gonna be operational or do we, have we not gotten to that point yet?
Yeah, you're asking questions I, I don't understand, I mean, I thought you would be interested in knowing what the costs of running juveniles were.
Okay, do you know those costs?
Well, I, I have my interpretation of some costs and Bill and I can talk about that, yeah. Is, is that what you wanna talk about?
Yes.
The costs?
Yes.
Well, you know, the staffing needs for handling the juvenile program is a four additional staff and one administrator. Are, are you guys in an agreement about that? I mean, do you, do you think that more people are needed to handle juveniles?
No.
No.
I, I. You're over staff already.
That would, that would be something we would be discussing.
You don't think your president administration can handle the administration part of this?
No, by law, a separate administrator needs to be hi- hired to handle juveniles.
This is what Steve Ayen says?
Yeah. So, I can see you have, I, you don't understand the specifics or guidelines. So, is that kind of what we wanna do here, is, is visit about the specifics, guidelines required?
Can I ask you?
You probably need to know that then.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, Kurt Weaver is on staff and he was the chairman of juvenile administrator. Um, is he now not able to be the juvenile administrator?
Well, I think he probably could be.
Is he still on staff?
That's a good question, I'm not sure, do you know the answer?
He, he still is on staff, but his job description is not juvenile coordinator, so we would have to hire him as the juvenile coordinator. Right now he is the prea coordinator. And they are two separate things, they, they fall hand in hand with each other, but, but, uh, his job description is to get us into compliance with prea at this stage of the age.
So before the juveniles left, was he the prea coordinator and the juvenile coordinator?
I, I don't think so.
Yes, he does. And he's a kid.
Well, we had several staff, we had several staff handling the juveniles, so, you know, who was actually the juvenile coordinator is. So we have in there, I don't know who had that job description, but, um, since we quit doing juveniles and job descriptions changed. So we would have to hire him back as a, as a juvenile coordinator if that's the way we went.
Okay, so let me ask you this, from a, from a financial standpoint then, um, what he's being paid at this point, um. He would have to be paid more, even though he was both before, if he, if he becomes both again, he's gonna have to be paid a lot more, is that what you're saying?
I think that's the assumption, yeah.
Because he really wasn't the juvenile coordinator before?
I think that's the assumption.
Well, if he was, then when the juvenile program went away, then that went away as well, so.
But it was only suspended, right, it wasn't.
Well, you made a motion that.
What did you ask me about, the, the juvenile program?
Yeah, it wasn't suspended, it was.
It was, the contract with, the contract with, uh.
The federal juvenile program has ended.
No, you don't know why I'm talking about the local juvenile program?
I think the local juvenile program was effectively discontinued as of the first year. Or, I, I shouldn't say the first year, but it was discontinued. It was discontinued when the federal juvenile program ended, cause everybody that was involved with the federal juvenile program, for that call. And those were the people that allowed us to handle the local juveniles.
Hey, that, that's not correct, April sixteenth was the date that you stopped. Containing local juveniles at the law enforcement center.
But the decision to discontinue the juvenile program was made earlier than that, I'm sure.
The federal program.
Yeah, and along with that, the, the local juvenile program.
Oh, you decided back in January that you weren't gonna take.
Yeah, I think so, is that kind of how that worked out?
I think that you're, you're pressed on that, Rick, with, um, uh, when we're, when it was recommended by two different individuals that we discontinue our juvenile program, that we get that.
And so, I was saying, you know, when we talk about the decision to discontinue, a lot of it stems from, in discussions with our prior administrators, you know. I think you'd have to agree, the most successful administrator that you had, who really had made the recommendation to us before he left. That we needed, we couldn't afford to handle the juvenile program. So, you know, if you have any discussions or questions, a, a good reference would be Dick Johnson. I visited with him to make sure that what I'm telling you. I visited with him, make sure that what I'm telling you, he verifies. I think that's important, because I think you guys have serious reservations about who's telling you what. So, I throw out, I throw out Dick Johnson's name, I think he's a good guy that you should talk to, to verify, you know, what, what our thoughts on handling local juveniles are.
So, so just to clarify this, um, before Dick retired in September, he came to the board and said, "I think that you should discontinue holding local tribal and federal juveniles."
No, I, I, I can't say, I can't speak to the fact of tribal juveniles.
But local?
But local juveniles, he said we couldn't afford to provide that service.
And it wasn't, it wasn't done as a solid recommendation, Commissioner, it was, it was done if, if these particular things fall into place, this is what the consequences would be, and this is what I would recommend you do at that stage of the year.
Cause he too saw...
Would you elaborate on that, please?
Well, he too saw that...
If the federal juvenile, you know, we have a set number, and I believe it was seven, if we fell below seven on the federal juvenile level, it would become a cost prohibitive for us to continue the program. And we were down to two.
And what he verifies is the cost, that we, that you and I, or LEC and, uh, and, um, I guess I would say that Ramsey, cause you, you probably have the most juveniles, although the city, does the city have juveniles?
They do, but they all run the follow-up around the county, I believe. Yeah.
So it basically boils down to the identified cost of running the juvenile program, and whether we can afford to provide that service, and whether or not you can afford to pay for that service. So it boils down to, you know, let's talk about that administrator, you know, administrator for staffing, people who are handling juveniles, for additional, you know, and I think they've identified a cost of three hundred grand.
Who's they know?
Um, well, I, I think Peggy, Peggy did the initial, has done a, a study for...
To just, you just use an administrator's salary and...
Yeah, administrator's salary of forty grand in entry-level positions for the four correctional staff needed for juvenile at thirty-five thousand, so, so total dollars is about two hundred grand per salaries, and about a hundred thousand for employee benefits. So that's where that hundred grand gets, but, you know, it's been that we would talk about, hey, can somebody else provide, you know, can we reduce that cost from three hundred to a lower number? I mean, that makes sense that you guys and us researched that question.
I was very surprised to learn that any county has never cert, has never became their juveniles here, nor has Nelson.
They've all been to a different, two different...
Yeah, that was the question, I didn't know that.
I didn't, I didn't know that, so really what we're talking about is Anderson, Ray, and Nelson, and, um, Tom and Tom. Um, I've also looked at the numbers of pre-adjudicated juveniles over the last couple of years.
Uh, so what level is that you have?
And there's an awful lot of times that there are none in there. So, so you're telling us then that when, when there are no juveniles, or when there's one juvenile in there, you still have to have five staff and you have to pay them all the time?
Right, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
So they can't go work over in the, in the other side, in the, in the adult side, if there's no juvenile?
Well, I think they could, they could, but we still would have to have those x, those bodies in place, those five bodies in place.
Well, I would guess if you had those four bodies and administrator in place, you could really cut down on your overtime.
Well, that could be...
Cause you could maybe start doing eight-hour shifts instead of twelve. And, I mean, there's, and there's a lot of things that I think could be done to order that cost. And, 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 and believe me, I don't, I, I don't want, I don't want our, I don't want our juveniles to go to Grand Forks, but I also don't want them thrown, or put in with, with adults, I don't, I don't want any staff members to be getting in trouble.
I would think you'd wanna do it right, wouldn't you?
We wanna do it right.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
But I don't understand how you operated from January until April with our juveniles, our pre-trial, local, non-adjudicated juveniles, from January to April, without increasing your staff. Cause you let, you let part of your staff go when you, in January, when you, when you lost, when you, when you were done with the federal program. And then Judge Foudy brought to the forefront the idea that if you have tribal juveniles here and you're not providing them with the educational benefit, because they're longer term, you're not providing them with the educational benefits or the other, that are the other services, then you are probably breaking the law, you probably shouldn't have those tribal juveniles either, okay?
So you, you were working on conversation by the general?
Yeah, but that doesn't, that doesn't address twenty-four to forty-eight hour retention or detention of local juveniles. And that is what the big stir is about. I, you know, we keep talking about educating juveniles and, and providing services for juveniles, that isn't a part of this picture that we're trying to put into place, is that correct?
That's right.
Do I understand that correctly?
That's right, that's my interpretation too, that these are just short-term juveniles that we're dealing with. But it still requires those extra bodies, you know, again, I verified that with Dick, I mean, that that's what would have to take place, is four correctional staff to provide twenty-four, seven, three, six, five, and an administrator, by law. Well, we sure could talk about how we could get around some of that, but those are the requirements, additional requirements and staffing that we would need to handle juveniles.
What's Steve?
I think we just, we just need to come to that agreement.
What's, what's Steve Ainge saying, does he give you any more ideas that what?
Well, I...
I'm sure Dick can...
Dick is saying that that's what Steve told him all along, is that additional requirements for staffing to handle juveniles. But I have no problem with us digging into that issue deeper, to see if, but, you know, the minute you start talking about five additional staff, that's when your costs really get up there, don't you agree?
Oh, I agree with you.
That's where we get that three hundred thousand dollar mark, that's what the cost would be.
It's probably undoable if, if we can't put these five people someplace else, you know, to fill the lots.
Merna's right, when she talks about the numbers, you know, we went back and researched what kind of mandates we would have for just those juveniles, Merna, the, the short-term care. Last year, on average, we had four a month, averaging fifteen-day stays, so that's sixty mandates a month that you're paying for.
But you never have fifteen-day stays.
Well, that's the, the number used to come up with an average mandate stay. It probably was the average mandate stay before the juvenile disappeared, the federal juvenile disappeared. Don't you think that the stay was a little longer, cause we were able to handle it?
Not for the local.
Not for the local, I have, I am, I almost have it done by half calendars of what days there were pre-adjudicated.
And I have found somebody questioning those mandate estimates, in fact, I would welcome a more accurate mandate count. But would you think it's more than a thousand mandates per month?
But Craig, don't, don't you, don't you...
No, but you need to know those mandates divided into the cost.
Exactly, but doesn't your financial advisor have one?
Yeah, and those are her numbers, I think they're being challenged somewhat here, but those are the numbers, seven hundred and twenty mandates is what she found out over the year, year's history.
So there are seven hundred and twenty mandates for pre-adjudicated local juveniles per year, which is an average of two point two a day, every day.
Right, so take that seven twenty, let's say eight hundred, pretty easy figure, so you're, you're paying for eight hundred mandates, so, when you're only paying thirty dollars a day for those eight hundred mandates, that was a good buy, wasn't it, twenty-four thousand? Now we're talking about, okay, we think we, you need to pay at least four hundred dollars a day, take four hundred times eight hundred mandates, that's three hundred and twenty thousand. That builds quite a bit of difference. Do you, do you wanna pay that? I, I mean, I, I say that, that's, that's such a big increase that you would have to pay for. And even that doesn't address the total costs. I wanna bring up one more point. You have to keep those people separate, you know, the only way we can accommodate that requirement is to allocate eight beds of our total facility strictly for your short-term stay in juveniles. Right now, we're able to rent all of those eight beds out every day for seventy, about seventy bucks a day. So on those eight beds, right now, we're able to make about, what was the number?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so now you're asking us, so I wanna talk about this number. There's two hundred and twenty-five thousand now that we won't be making if we set aside those rooms for juveniles only, and...
But there's three hundred and twenty thousand that you will be making.
And there's an extra three hundred and twenty thousand dollars with the cost. So you gotta add those two numbers together to see the financial impact to the LEC. So for easy math, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars is what it's gonna impact us, our budget financially.
Well, what you're telling us, Greg, is right, I mean, I agree with you there, but we need to come up with another solution for these juvenile. You know, we need to leave them eight beds there for fed, federal prisoners, fine, but we need to come up with some type of solution to handle this juvenile problem, whether it's another billion, or, I don't know.
I, I think you're right, I mean, and that's some of the options that we were discussing, we were talking about transportation, I, I sense that that's an option that's disliked by the people that handle juveniles, and maybe disliked by, by you, but that's an option. But, yeah, I think you're right, you know, to lose that money on these eight beds, we almost are forced to build some sort of additional facility, uh, just to handle juveniles. If we go that direction...
A two or a three-bed, you know, facility?
Or something that handles four.
And if that don't accommodate everything we need, if we have more than that for a period of two days or a week, well, then we'll have to have, you know, access to put a Grand Forks or something.
That'd be, that'd be another solution.
But, you know, I totally understand the financing, but I mean, I...
Just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're going to offer a lot of...
I thought I have a million tax dollars just to satisfy this thing, we can't come up with another solution. Has anybody went back to Steve, since he was here, and asked him for any, any more input? Has the board talked to him, and, you know?
Who's talked to him for that?
What has he said, Bill?
What has he said, Mark, what has he said, Mark, what has he said?
I, I was not privy to that conversation, if there, if there ever was one.
We've talked to him quite a bit, and, uh, we're researching...
You, you can't say "we," because I, I was not there.
No, I'm not talking about "we" either.
Okay.
Who are you talking about, who's "we"?
The administration, and, well, the board, but, uh, you know, there's periods of time that...
Well, not the board.
Periods of time that go by between board meetings, so I'm saying "we" as, uh...
Craig and yourself and the administration, or, I mean, who is...
Well, I can't even say, I've been in any discussions with Steve and...
No, no, and I haven't been personally either, but, but I know that, that the administration has.
Okay.
And some of the questions that we're asking him is to, to your suggestion, and it's been talked about, if, if we have an off-site facility or something like that, does it need to be barred, or does it need to be, uh, what kind of construction does it have to be to qualify to contain these juveniles? Uh, could it also be a multi-purpose, uh, multi-use facility for, um, maybe used for attending care or, or, um, even overflow from the RRC when, uh, when they get enough people, cause that places people all the time too. So, you know, there have been conversations in the past about adding on another RRC unit, just flip-flop that one and start over again, but, uh, with the pressures that have been put on the RRC staff right now, um, we're trying to find a home for that, solving those problems over there before we try to add any more to their work.
Can I ask you an RRC question? What, what do you do, okay, I'm a, I'm a, I was in the state pen, and I've been released to work release, so I have to be in a residential recovery unit. Um, so I come back here to Devil's Lake, what do you do with me if it's full?
I always like to give the professional the chance to just...
What do you, what do you do with me if it's full?
For a state person like that, I wouldn't accept them if I didn't have a bunk for them.
So then what would happen to me?
Then more likely they'd find another reentry center for you to transition to, others, Grand Forks, Fargo, Manhattan.
Do you keep federal and state, um, recovery people in your facility?
Yes.
So the guy from New York City gets the bed and I'm screwed?
It's, we don't, typically they're locally, you know, they're, they're people from our area, that's why they look to send them to our facility specifically. There have been cases where we've denied people, typically, you know, due to space, or, but more, uh, more often than not, it's because they've already exhausted the services in the community. Um, we do, at this time, if I have Ramsey County person in the, in the facility, that's just a local worker release person, and I have the state wants a bunk, then I'll, I'll bring that state guy in, that Ramsey County guy back to the jail.
Back to where?
Back to the jail, and he'll do work release out of the jail. But that's, I only do that with, with the local entities, because, uh, the state and BOP, they pay more.
Well, if our people better, if you start paying as much as the state does, so our local people have as much hold as the state and federal. I, my concerns are, you know, I guess maybe for the first time since, since this whole thing started, I, I, I agreed with everything that Jessica said. Everybody has the right, no matter where they're at in their life, for certain things. When I, when I start hearing about people who are sexually assaulted, or are on the edge of, of dying in jail, I start thinking there's something, there's something wrong with this program. Why don't we have person, why is your back turned to someone puking blood? Why is your back turned to, how did this sexual assault happen in a fully-staffed facility? I wanna know what we can do to make this better, cause we need this to happen. And, 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 and I think that for some reason, people have gotten very defensive about this, because every time I ask a question, I am just about, I mean, I've had fingers pointed at me, I've had people telling me that I'm an idiot, and I don't know what I'm talking about, and that none of this stuff has happened, and it just feels like everything has gotten non-transparent, when all we really want is what's best for everyone. Something needs to be added here, Merna, in all that I have seen, and all the people that have come to my door, that I have led to returning, that I have led to counselors, that I have written letters for, in twenty years. All of these individuals that are human beings, that have made big mistakes, little mistakes, that are still human beings, not once in twenty years was Deanie Deacon's name ever mentioned as a perpetrator of a violation of the Civil Rights Act, or to turn her back on anything like that. The things I mentioned, she was all off the floor line. Talk to the inmates.
I think it's important too that we don't drop this juvenile issue that is a problem, that we have to address at the feet of our, our current administration, it's not their fault that we are seriously looking at alternatives to this juvenile issue. That's not an administration's fault, if you wanna look for fault, blame the board for making that decision not to go that direction.
Oh, trust me, Craig, you guys have all been...
Well, and you've done a good job of doing this, thank you, I appreciate that.
You guys have all had your feet put right up to the fire, yeah.
But, but I, I think it's important too that the most successful administrator of that facility for twenty-three years, if you wanna start pointing fingers and accusing Dick Johnson of making the wrong decision, go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Well, you know, I'm not necessarily pointing fingers.
No, that's not the way to do it.
I mean, it's solving this problem.
It doesn't do anything.
And the way to solve the problem with a juvenile, I guess, is downsize the facility we need and look at it that way. I would suggest the first thing you should do is possibly look at somebody that has any experience with this juvenile situation in your law enforcement center. And evidently, maybe it's this Kirk Weaver that has worked with juvenile detention before. And let him work on it part-time to try to come up with a plan, whether, you know, it's using another facility or, you know, what we can come up with, I guess. Maybe not the eight-bed idea. Maybe you can't afford to let that go. Maybe that's our only plan.
That's a good suggestion. I think we have some men house expertise. Today I learned that Robert, Rob, is very knowledgeable about the juvenile issue too.
Yeah.
So we sure...
That's better idea, Rob.
As a standpoint, yeah, that's what we need to do.
Tell us what direction to go.
That's what we need to do.
You people weren't there. I'm asking for advice. I asked for advice six weeks ago and I'm really outside looking in. One thing I'd like to add, though, is Ramsey County has a huge part of this pie, huge. I was told by a county commissioner today from another county that's in this law enforcement center that their bill is six to nine hundred dollars a month. And that just about knocked me over. I go, "What?" You know, we're on forty grand a month. I mean, that, some months doesn't cover it.
We're going to be over a half a million dollars this year.
So we need to find a solution.
For over a half a million dollars?
Just a minute, Rob. Let me think.
Yeah.
Probably use my train of thought.
Okay, go ahead.
We need to find a solution for this problem for the people of Ramsey County. Because this commission is concerned because we're covering well over sixty percent of the costs of the law enforcement center. When things get accused and finger-pointing going on, that doesn't solve nothing. Let's get an answer. Let's get an answer to this problem and let's move forward. Let's not just sit here and backstab everybody and... That's a good problem. Rob, do you have some ideas? I want to hear them.
Well, I mean, a lot of this logistics. I mean, when you're talking about the juveniles, it's going to be logistics like Craig was mentioning, you know, the eight beds, okay? You know, the way that is set up, the reason the cost of eight beds is because you have to have that sound barrier. Okay? So here's my question. What is the count been of the jail? I mean, the average count of the adult population of the jail bed? I don't know. Okay, so I believe there's a hundred and eight beds in that facility.
Yesterday, there were fifty-nine males and seventeen females.
Okay, so that's seventy-six.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine males and seventeen females.
So we had seventy-six beds occupied. So these eight beds...
And we're losing those eight beds at two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
So that is...
That might be the count yesterday, but the count would be ninety-five to a hundred just a month. I think we had an incident with the judge make a ruling on the BIA business and they cleaned this up.
See, where we at? I don't get a daily count. I don't think it's been full for quite a while. I believe it hasn't been full.
The knowledge of people... Here's a system.
The people are giving your name.
Emily.
Emily, okay.
It's been around seventy-seven.
You're on the count every day?
Every day.
Every day?
Yes.
Six months ago, what would you guess it was?
A hundred.
You think it was a hundred?
Did that include your juveniles?
No.
Six months ago.
You can answer this question?
Yes.
Did you just get less federal prisoners or there's less locals coming in? Or what's the secret there?
I'm not sure. I think there's less federal, but a lot of locals.
Emily, did the BIA pull out a bunch of clients because of some strife?
I've heard that. We still have spirally people there, so...
Did they clean out quite a few? I'd heard that there was some strife, but I think Bill can allude to that too.
We had a situation where one of the judges locally said, "If they're in our facility, that I want to have them in front of me before you take them over to tribal court." And if tribal court says, "They're our prisoners, we're the ones that are giving you the business. We want them out here." And then they run them through tribal court and let them go. We lose our opportunity with them and there's no way we can confiscate them back until we find them and tell them. And it's an issue that's been brought to a rook because of that issue. We didn't have a chance to have the judge and the tribal entity get together and try to resolve that.
But Russ McDonald and Judge Tommy are going to get a meeting to see if they can resolve that
because someone could be pulled out of there because of that.
Lonnie, can I ask you a question? Is anybody from either high camp or Hobart's office going to be present?
I don't know. I just heard this happening.
Because I alerted them on...
That's the jurisdictional thing, you know? When BIA brings an inmate into Devil's Lake, they're in state jurisdiction. In the past, the judges have allowed them, you know, to go ahead and take them back even though we don't have, even though we have a warrant. And we've had a number of times where tribal court released them and we weren't able to. Because there's a pretty extensive work list. I know the tribe is working on issues on how to deal with their crime rate and their recidivism. So I know that's an ongoing process between the tribal council, chairman McDonald, and the local judges. So it's a lot of different fingers in that problem.
This was a particular degree just a process, I believe.
Well, Emily, as far as you know, then the count has been in the last six months been around seventy to eighty. Is that correct?
Not in the last month, I would say.
It was the last month, yeah.
It's been pretty low in the last month.
I mean, every month we report that we did, the numbers are always ninety-five or higher.
Usually are. Just to finish, you know, the logistics, even when your count's sitting in that seventy range, you know, you have your individuals. The reason that these units are so hard to get is because you have your individuals who need to be segregated, who need to be in protective custody. And the facility's just not in shape to, they don't have that many units, so these beds are primarily used for those. So if you were to call and bring a juvenile in, now you have to find somewhere to put these guys you can't put with anybody else. And that's where the problem is lying. You know, even though when the count drops down, you know, you have the bunks available, but you just can't, logistically, you just can't do it.
Well, it sounds to me like you need to remodel that.
It's a thirty-year-old, so you...
If we move and agree to...
Well, and you know, Craig, you know, I'm not trying to point fingers, but this is what I'm trying to understand. For the last twenty-five years, you have charged thirty dollars a day to house an inmate at the law enforcement center. Now, if the information I'm getting is correct, it's going to be sixty dollars or seventy-five dollars or four hundred dollars. Why has, why administratively and as a board, haven't you thought about the future? As to, rather than keeping it at thirty dollars, why didn't you raise it to thirty-five and then four to... But I...
Let me explain it.
That is a good question, but yeah, Bill, go ahead and explain.
I can explain.
What did you want us to have in our reserves? More than the money bucks that we have?
You know, when you...
If you rebuilt, you wouldn't.
Let me explain.
In the past, our ratio of our local, and that's all five counties combined in the city, ratioed out at about forty percent local, sixty percent federal. Thirty on the local side, seventy on the federal side. Today, it is flip-flop. And when you put that, those numbers together at three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that adds up to over a half a million dollars a year. And those are the consequences.
That's all the feds are paying is thirty dollars?
No. No, they're only forty percent of the prisoners now instead of sixty. So when you put the numbers to that and it goes on a continual basis for a whole year, that's their impact that it's had on the facility. And those impacts have just been realized in the last few months due to the programs that have been put in place by the legislature, some of them, with the DUI laws and some of these other programs that were just incarcerating more local people right now. And those are the consequences evident. Before, we had the luxury of having probably ten percent of that money to put away in a bank every year and build a reserve. Now we're losing ten percent of that money every year and we have to make decisions. And that's where we're at today.
And just to let me finish my point, would it have been wiser in retrospect then to raise your fees to... You can't feed someone for thirty dollars a day. So would it have been wiser to take your capital and spend it on keeping your facility at a place where it can do the kind of work it needs to do? And then it's water under the bridge. I realize that, and I'm not pointing you fingers, but it gives me a whole different look at administration too.
We foresaw this and didn't give back the money last year that we usually give back because of our reserves. Because we saw that something's coming down the plate and we're going to have to start figuring out how we're going to handle the finances.
And the other thing is, it was such a beneficial impact to Ramsey County and the city of Devil's Lake. We were saving a lot of dollars between the entities, not having to pay sixty dollars for your nine thousand mandates or our three thousand mandates. Just take those numbers times thirty and just see what the annual savings were for our entities. That was a good deal.
Believe me, I understand that, but...
So, you're back to your question, why should we even make more money? But there was some vision.
You should have used it for a distinction.
There was that vision. I mean, I wasn't on the board at that time, but the board had the vision to get into the residential business. And that's proven to be a good financial decision that that board made at the time.
The money made the entity in there, now it's...
Should we do that again or are we now looking at spending some money for a different way to handle these eight hundred mandated juveniles or whatever? You know, those are the things that we need on a positive basis to discuss.
And there's talk about flip-flopping that and putting a building over there that can be multifunctional and conserve all the concerns that we've talked about in the last three or four months. And that's, you know, that's what we're going to do. So, you know, we don't feel that the full double-wide mobile homes is a good fit for any of this kind of stuff. And we had other ideas for that a lot, but, you know, due to the discussions that we've had, we backed off on building, making changes there and allow that to happen over there until we can figure things out. And there's a lot of things that the law enforcement center has been doing for this community that actually are somebody else's job. And like the twenty-four-seven and the attending care and stuff like that. We've been helpful in all of those areas and we continue to be. Just ask for the same thing back.
I would make a suggestion that, it's a small suggestion, that, you know, we're sitting next to Minnesota, who has innovative juvenile programs, I believe, and to reach out and look how other communities facing the same problems within our area, meaning not just in the state of North Dakota, but in Minnesota, perhaps are handling these same kind of issues and what kind of solutions they would come up with that might assist this and familiarizing themselves with the parameters of the law, of the specific rules and regulations that govern prisoners that are adults, women, and juveniles. And it will make it an easier understanding, that's what we're, much more fluid taught. But I think there's other ways out there to look, find solutions to bring in.
We talked about that as well, Jessica, that community members are interested enough in forming a subcommittee or something like that to reach out and find and bring to the board some suggestions or some help in that area. We need to be afforded the time to, you know, make these things work and meet the three of compliances that are coming down the pipe.
And that's what I'm talking about. But I really, I understand the outreach to the many we're calling out there. Right now, my primary advocacy and activism has been, you know, I need that. Right now, that's just such a kettle of fish.
Well...
Well, find it.
My suggestion is, is get somebody honest and have a focus on coming up with a solution. Whether it's an assistant administrator or somebody within the law enforcement center or somebody, whatever, you know, a subcommittee if they can work together and come up with some type of solution so we have more than just the answer, how we're going to have people trained in January or what is it, a couple next month or what is it?
We're hoping that, see the initial consultation with the educational sources where that, the school that was on in October was full and there was no opportunity.
Just give me a date of when they're going to get trained.
But now we've got babies in that. So we've got names for four going in there in October if they can work that out. And they're starting to understand the necessity of bringing more people into compliance. It's not just us, it's all around the state. So I think they're working as hard as they can as to try to fit more people into those classes.
Do you think the board is committed to answering the juvenile problem that they're going to have in the city?
You know, I think they've told you that we're moving forward and addressing the problem.
But a facility of that, we need to address and, oh, we're going to house it and use it.
You know, it's such a tough sell when I come to you and says, "Okay, yeah, we're moving forward and we're going to take care of it." But, "Oh, by the way, you got to pay us six hundred thousand dollars." You know, that just doesn't make sense, kind of. We can't ask you to do that. I mean, we shouldn't ask you to do that.
Well, we're already going to do it. We're already in for six hundred thousand dollars in there.
Oh, it's just for the juveniles.
And are you getting this year?
No, but this is just for the juveniles. In addition to the bill that you pay us for adults anyway. I mean, you're paying us three hundred thousand dollars for adults before we raised the rate. Now what are you going to pay us? So you're going to, I mean, if that, we owe the rate just for adults, you're going to pay us six hundred grand. Irrespective of this discussion on juveniles.
You know what, Craig? I don't know how we can do that because we're maxed out at ten males.
And I agree. How do you do that?
I don't know how we're going to be expected to do it. Do we need to close the whole facility and ship all of our locals out?
Well, I think we've proven that it's been a good deal on the adult side. I mean, I think, you know, you name, we get a pretty good deal.
Well, thirty dollars a day, it's a wonderful deal. Nobody is disputing that.
Name it up, we, if we could just deal with the adults and that raise was fifty-five or sixty, that would be a pretty good deal.
We still couldn't afford it because at six hundred thousand dollars a year, we are over our ten max budget. So we can't afford to send our adults to the law enforcement center.
And that's why I said...
How are we going to do this, is my question.
We need to look at our cooperative agreement with the other counties and also ask them, you know, is there eight percent a pair a month? Is there thirteen percent a pair a month when we're paying over sixty all at once? No, it's, I've come and told you before, part of this whole thing is to review all this and I want to get it done by October. And we've got a long ways to go, people. We've got a lot of headway we've got going on here. And that's why we simply have to get to work. Answer these questions. We have to have people be willing to look at the financial part of it so that we can make good decisions. I mean, that's the way, the numbers aren't lying to us. Those are the numbers. And so and how do we make that work? Rather than sit back and listen to the public outcry and that you're demanding that we do this without giving us a fair shake and letting us present all the evidence and how we can come with it.
So what you're saying then is that, and you can correct me if you think I'm wrong, is that if we, if the public had just never gotten wind of, you know, all of the issues going on at the law enforcement center, the staff losses, the... All of the things that have been happening, that you guys wouldn't have any of these problems now?
No, I think you would have been on top of it.
And I think we...
But you would have been completely on top of them if you hadn't had to deal with the public learning how difficult this situation is.
It's hard enough that you're knowing that we had lost... It's spreading out that you're knowing that we had lost almost a million dollars with the federal juvenile revenue. We were concerned about the finances of that facility, even before anything happened. Even before the, the raises, before the staff turnover. The fact that we lost nine hundred and ten thousand dollars of juvenile revenue that we had made last year. How do you, how do you, how do you, that's, that's a lot of money, that would be tough for you guys to handle on your budget, to lose a half of it, it's tough for us, so. I was concerned about that, but...
But, but what I, what I had hoped would happen, and, and it doesn't seem to be happening, is that there would be innovative ideas that would come up, um, ideas to win back some of that revenue. And there, and different people have come forward with those ideas, and they've kind of basically been shut down.
Oh, no, that's not true at all.
Nobody wants, um...
That's not true, not at all.
If, if that's not true, well, then you tell me, you tell me why it's not true.
If that was a, a concern, why don't we wanna work together to see how we would crack that?
Exactly, great, that is exactly what I'm saying. And that's not the sense that a lot of people working in the court system, and people working in the facility, and people no longer working in the facility, that's not the impression that they're getting.
Now, we're, you and I, we were just talking about finances, now we're talking about overall morale of the facility, a separate issue?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about...
I don't, I don't poo-poo that as, as a goal, or as a need for, for me.
What I'm talking about is using innovative means of making this facility run.
Yeah, what?
What steps have you taken to recover some of that nine hundred and ten thousand dollars in lost revenue? What steps have been taken? As a board, can you tell me what steps that you have taken to try to recover some of that loss, and, and please share it with us?
Well, I, I know that the thought was, okay, to absorb that nine hundred and ten thousand dollar loss. One of the goals, one of the, the strategies was to eliminate all the expenses associated with that, that area, federal juvenile. So people were let go, you know, how many, how many federal juvenile...
Works three, four times a year.
Three, so we, we saved salary costs, um, taking those steps to be leaner and meaner as far as cost. And then the second step was, okay, to replace all those bodies where we were getting, what was the daily rate on juvenile, federal juveniles? It was about two hundred and seventy, or twenty-nine?
Over two hundred.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Two thirty-seven, or so.
So we were replacing those, and we were going to the, the other people that send us prisoners and said, hey, we got room now to take more of your people. But unfortunately, they're not paying that, two seventy, the, the, the tribe, the tribal... Tribal people are paying us seventy, and the marshals, if it's just paying us nine, uh, I don't know what's specific.
They're all between sixty-five and seventy.
But those are some of the absorptions that we were trying to do to make up for that net loss of nine hundred and ten thousand. Then we were just gonna say, okay, the expectations were still that we were gonna lose three hundred thousand dollars. Well, we know what we were gonna do to make that, that was, we were gonna come back to you and say, okay, we're gonna have to bump your mandate, your mandate rate from thirty to forty or fifty to make up for that, that net loss. That was the initial plans of how we were gonna do it. Meanwhile, we've had a two hundred and some thousand dollar salary increase that adds to the dilemma. Your, your, it's just the, I, I don't blame you. The juvenile, the juvenile issue even makes sense.
But you haven't put the money in yet.
No, not yet, but I mean...
But, but we did do a push for the nine-one-one, uh, to go to a dollar fifty, and that was successful, so that's gonna help out by a hundred and fifty thousand.
At least he was subsidizing the nine-one-one program, we're gonna be able to truly pay nine-one-one costs from nine-one-one money, so it frees up some money. It'll be interesting, I agree, I, the seat, I'll chase out at the end, I, I, I...
Well, I will, I will have to say to you that this is the first time we have ever sat down and asked questions and not had someone saying things to us like, it's complicated, you, you, you'll never understand this, this is too complicated, I can't explain this to you, or, I didn't say that, I didn't, I might have said that, but I didn't mean that, or, this is the first time anyone has ever sat down and talked to us about this. And, and I will have to tell you that I appreciate it greatly.
Yes, thank you for coming.
I, I, I appreciate you coming, I appreciate the things that Jessica said. And I think that we have to get to a place where we can get other, outside of, of, uh, your eight-member board and, and, um, find some solutions here, because, I mean, you know, hey, yeah, Dick Johnson pulled federal juveniles out of the air and got federal ju- federal prisoners in here, and he made a, uh, an organization that was ready to go down and close.
Well, I wouldn't agree with that, Murn.
Worked.
Yeah.
And twenty-three years ago, when he started, they were in grave danger.
Yeah, that's right, they were in grave danger.
And he did, he, he, he was innovative enough to, to fix that. And, and, and trust me, I, I appreciate that about you. But we have to keep moving forward in such a way that we keep being innovative enough to keep this facility running. And at the same time, not further endangering everyone. And that lack of training, and that lack of protocol in hiring people is coming back to bite that, and bite us big time. You know, I, I talked to Jessica Evans, she no longer works for the law enforcement center, but she has a degree in criminal justice, and, um, she loved her job. And I asked the question, why did you, why did you, why did you leave? And, you know what, not one person that I've asked, not five people I've interviewed, not one person has told me because of the salary. Nobody. I couldn't do twelve hours a day, six days a week. I had a, I had a, I had a three-year-old, and, and my parents were raising my kids, because I could never have a day off. Um, I was, somebody was tattling on me constantly. I did this wrong, I did that wrong, I, I talked too much when I went to corrections officer training. I, you know, morale, you know, the morale is so poor that people have to leave for their own well-being. Those are the things that I'm, that I'm, that I'm hearing, that people are seeing. And I wish that everyone would listen without making it seem like an accusation against someone. But they, but they don't. If you say anything, you know, you got Jeff Falcoing, and you're saying, and don't you be telling everybody it's gonna cost two hundred and fifty dollars a day to house a juvenile. Never mind that the newspaper, and the radio, and the television are all standing there, but I shouldn't talk about it, because I'm causing the problem. What do you think that does for morale for your employees sitting here?
I agree.
And, and it needs to stop. You need to start listening, and I appreciate you coming here, because I know, I think we all have listened more. I'd like to just add one thing, and this is the last thing I'll say. These are human beings, I say them, human beings. Not product, not ten, twenty humans, they're human beings. Live, breathe, love, make huge mistakes, little mistakes, big time, little time, right? They have a voice. And the monkeys run the zoo. And the real story of every penal system is in the kite. It's in what is sent through with the prisoners, the inmates adjudicated, pre-adjudicated, what gets filtered out, and what's really going on in the institution. That's how you find out. You know, Jessica, I knew that too, I interviewed a, an inmate, it's pretty sad. It was very, very sad, yeah. It is very sad. And it's nothing to be fifty or a hundred of them, nothing to be proud of. Yep. And I, and I realize that I am emotionally involved in this, and I, and I'm sorry that I'm not as objective as I probably could be at times, but, um, I think it's broken, and I hope it gets fixed.
Yeah, I think you went in about the, the three areas, the three goals that we do have, and we hope for improvement. This was laid at the feet of administration, but improvement in training, improvement in morale, and improvement in communication. And I, you know, and down the road, that'll be the, that'll also be the, the goals that will measure the quality of this administration. I think we just need to let, give us some time to see how that works out.
Well, it's a good goal, I hope so.
Ready? Comments, how many of you got it?
Well, I wanna echo that, I think we still have a huge morale problem. We had some bumps in our roads, and hopefully we're going forward. I don't, I can't sit here and say today, yep, absolutely, positively, we're going forward, but I guess time will tell. The question is, how much time are we gonna spend?
Any issue of communication reasons, please be clear.
Okay. Special election discussion, Elizabeth.
I'm not supposed to bring that to the meeting?
Uh, we went, we went...
Greg.
Thanks, Greg. We went to the meeting, um, we, we had a, 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 we almost had a meeting on Wednesday. And, um, we decided to go ahead with the election. We, um, chose the date of October seventh for reelection. I asked, uh, I asked, nobody had gotten back to the auditor's office yet, but I asked the memorial building to be set aside for that day. Um, it, it will be handled by the city. And it's, it's for a half-cent increase in sales tax to pay for, uh, to pay for the, the exact coverage will be, um, brought out. We were reassured time and time again that the contributions that were made by, um, the city, the county, and one other government entity, were educational, money to educate the public on what we wanted to be done uh, with this, with this wellness center and began center. So, uh, what they'll be asking for, Betty, is a list of, uh, mailing votes from the last election so that they can send, um, those votes, those, um, so, those applications, all those applications for the last, um, election. Um, Paul, is there anything you wanna add, as far as, um, the special election board?
How did you do the job, Murn?
And the city agreed.
Yeah, the city agreed, it's, it's their election, it's their baby. And anybody got any questions about the event center, wellness center, um...
There was a meeting last week, and somebody asked if, uh, if it'd vote for one.
No, you can't, it's, it's either yes or no. And, and I've gotten a lot of that as well, Bill, but, um, the choice was made by, by the, the committee to do it this way, and that's what, that's how it's improved. So nothing is finalized, and nothing will be finalized until after the vote.
If you wanna take a look at any of the specs, they are in Rachel Lindstrom's office at the forward double site, and she will go and fix it. If anybody wants to take a look at anything prior, and we'll be out in about, Murn, I'm sure, we'll, Kial speaking to, and several other people will be out prior to the vote, so we'll have some pictures out.
And it doesn't have to be a supermajority, point fifty or forty-nine, right?
Fifty-one percent.
More discussion? Moving on. Approval rate auditors get mentioned.
There was a motion at the beginning of the year, if the rate is more than state rate, that the person needs preapproval. And it'll be one night at E nine, it'll be close to ninety dollars, why not? It is not many less. So I just bring in a motion to...
Some motion in the second, all the favors, say aye. Aye, pull the same sign, motion carried. Standing Committee of North Dakota County Commissioners Association.
And that's that report, your government, Murn, it decided she wants to be in the legislative committee, is there anybody else that wants to be in the finance and audit nominee resolution? I just need to put your name in, and then you heard it, July, June, twenty-third.
I've made a motion to nominate, Murn, it could be on the legislative committee for the, for the motion of association.
Aye. There's a motion in the second, all the favors, say aye. Aye, pull the same sign, motion carried. Any other business to come before the commission's meeting?
Everyone with a number that you, you actually need to call, that one of us.